Call the meeting order, please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger. Councilmember Walton Gray. Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you, I heard through the grapevine that Councilwoman Walton Gray is with her daughter tonight, who's having a child, and we wish her good luck in that process, that's very exciting. Is there a motion for approval of the journal?
I move for approval of the journal of the meeting of May 2nd, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries, and May 2nd, 2017, journal is approved.
I move to suspend the rules in order for the presentation of a proclamation by County Executive Stadium to recognize National Correctional Officers and Employees Week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries, rules are suspended, please let's record show that Councilman Dolan is here in attendance.
Thank you, sorry I was late.
Alright, I'll read the proclamation. Good afternoon, good evening everyone. Whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Department of Justice Services have helped to make our community safer through both incarceration and rehabilitation, and whereas on a daily basis these professionals protect over 1,200 inmates from violence and teach them the vital skills they need to survive in life after completing their sentence, and whereas these often unsung heroes of the criminal justice process are a valued and integral part of the law enforcement community, and whereas in every part of the incarceration process from intake to release, these officers are dedicated to completing the tasks according to the stringent guidelines set forth by the American Correctional Association. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017 as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week.
Thank you, I'd like to make your presentation.
Would anybody like to join me? Anybody?
So I'd say if you will, yes, on behalf of the Department of Justice Services and its employees, I would like to thank you for this proclamation, to accept it on behalf of as well Mr. Parsons, Deputy of the Year, Mr. Clinton Taylor, I also commend the officers that appear to be, for the job they do, it's a difficult job they're charged with, and they are responsible for some 1,200 plus individuals, as we said earlier, taking care of their needs, responding to emergency calls, being of a medical nature, from attempted suicides, this is not an easy job, it's not an easy task, and these guys do it, there's John Braveman, the men do this on a daily basis, you know, with people with critical needs, mental health needs, drug addiction. All the challenges of 1,200 plus individuals on a daily basis, they do this, they do it with great pride, enthusiasm, and professionalism. I commend them, I thank them for the job they do, like I said, you are the best in the business to me, I've been doing this 20-some years, I know what you do firsthand being a former corrections officer who worked his way up the ranks, so appreciate you guys, keep up the good work, thank you.
We have no bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chairman, there are no tax compromises this evening, we move on to zoning matters. Okay, zoning matters, item number one, 2nd District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, that will be the order.
Item number two, 3rd District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number three, 3rd District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, 4th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, 6th District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number six, 6th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Move on to road and bridge matters, item number one, 2nd District.
Receive file and street be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Move on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 7th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, 5th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four, all districts.
Receive file and refer to the county councilor, and that will, same motion for number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 4th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number seven.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, 1st District.
Receive file and the change of order be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, that will be the order.
Item number 10, 1st District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item number 11. Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number 12, and that will be the order.
Item number 13.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. There are no add-ons this evening, so we'll move to reports to special committees, there are no reports, so we will proceed with the public forum.
Mr. Chairman, we have 15 speakers this evening.
Okay, tonight we have 15 speakers, when your names are called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, for your speaker.
Mike Olick.
Good evening, my name is Mike Olick, I'm at 6635 Ashbury Drive. Since last week, it has become even more evident that a majority in District 6 support zoning approval for McManus. A Call Newspapers poll shows 93% being in favor. The count of people in favor greatly outnumbers those against on the Facebook page of Councilman Trachis. Because of the stance taken by Councilman Trachis, many good people are still worrying about being able to take care of their families. Councilman Trachis has proudly stated that he is an assertive voice for the people of District 6, and he will guarantee you a voice that will speak your truth and refuse to be silenced. The people are speaking their truth, they overwhelmingly want McManus to be their new South County neighbor. Councilman Trachis's pre-election website stated, "If elected, District 6 and St. Louis County government will be affected and influenced by his efforts to stabilize and restore a bright future for St. Louis County." One definition for the word stabilize is, "to make unlikely to fail or decline." McManus buying and cleaning up a neglected property is stabilizing. Councilman Trachis is blocking that. McManus keeping his current employees while looking to hire more from District 6 is restoring a bright future for St. Louis County. Councilman Trachis is blocking that. On KMLV News, Councilman Trachis said, and I quote, "I just didn't feel that this particular use was appropriate in that location. I believe that's my responsibility as councilman to vet that." One definition of the word vet is to make a careful and critical examination of something. Another definition is to evaluate for possible approval or acceptance. Councilman Trachis has the benefit of a large number of people participating in the vetting process. They have made a careful and critical examination of the McManus businesses. They approve of McManus. Councilman Trachis, are you listening? Not only do I vote, I'm also an internet marketing professional. I bought the domain name ErnieTrachisForUs.net, that's spelled with the number 4. The website is live now, I'm taking this action independently and free of charge. The site showcases campaign promises made by Councilman Trachis and aims to show how closely his action follows his words. Instead of limiting ourselves to a three-minute speaking window or two minutes on the news, I bought the domain name for two years. The people will have a voice in more ways than you ever imagined.
Thank you. Roger McRey.
My name is Roger McRoy, I live at 3616 Summit Avenue, St. Louis, in Melville, and I'm here to speak with you, Chairman Trachis, and thanks everybody else for listening to me. It's about the McManus project, and we all have been notified, it is a heavy load, heavy load road, and out of 70 houses that is in a subdivision across from the property, 58 signatures have been collected. It would have been unanimous, but a lot of people wasn't at home. You know, if we need to rec the rest of their signatures, I'm sure there are people that have volunteered to go around and get that. I'm in no way profit from McManus construction, but I've lived here, I've lived in that area for 52 years, and when Tea Time was there, it was terrible. You know, the noise was terrible, and with McManus Construction there, you know, we're guaranteed that not only it's going to put something back into the community, but everything I hear about the fellow is just fantastic, you know, and I'd like to have a good neighbor there. As far as the traffic goes, Phoenix is down the street from us, and they don't give us a lot of traffic, you know, and I can't really see where a few snowplows going in and out to get a plow put on the front or something of that nature is really going to be that bad. If you would have noticed it with Tea Time, Tea Time was lined up, and there again, I just don't want to see a business that's going to get there that's going to let graffiti be written down on the wall and this gang stuff, I don't know how all that works, but I'm pretty sure, but when they start writing that stuff, that means they take over that area. And when Tea Time was there, it was there, and I was the first one to call the county to come and take it down, and then any other business that got tagged up and down through there, I went to the businesses and asked them if they could, you know, get it removed, and I explained to them what I thought it meant. You know, I can't read the writing, you know, but I just know that we don't need a bunch of tagging all over St. Louis County, and I think with McManus Construction there, I don't think that that's another thing we're not going to get, and it's a good neighborhood, and since he's, from everything I've heard, he seems to be a good person, I would, I recommend it, and I really believe in your heart, you've got strong thoughts about it yourself, but nevertheless, thank you for your time, thanks everybody for their time.
Thanks Roger.
John Struckoff.
Good evening, John Struckoff, I live at 10448 Gregory Court. I take exception to the personal attacks against Ernie Trachis. He's a good man doing his job as a councilman, and I'm quite proud of him. McManus Construction Company, there must be a problem if they're having trouble getting zoning, I think they've gone through this once or twice at that property, and the property itself, if you've looked at it, the excess road is fairly small, and if you're bringing snowplows and so on in there, I think that's going to cause a little problem there on LeMay Ferry. Phoenix Construction Company, if you drive by there, it's not very appealing, and I don't, you know, I've been involved in some construction, I think that doesn't really lend itself to an area where you have South County Mall, then also you have Sam's and other businesses there. The residents in the area, my daughter lives in the area, I don't think she welcomes that, she's a schoolteacher, young children, we go to Sam's Club and so on, so we travel that route. I understand Mr. McManus has sold his site, actually, I think he sold the site before he bought this, or bought this new place before he sold the old one, without proper zoning. I kind of question that move. His property at LeMay is up on a hill, I, you know, it's very steep, I think, there is no stop sign, they're going to be entering that busy section, there is no stop and so on, I think the wear and tear on the roadways is going to be a factor, there could be some environmental issues if he's dealing with salt and different chemicals, I think these issues should be addressed, and once again, I'm grateful for my councilman, Tony, or, yeah, Tony, or Mr. Trachis, thank you.
Rob McManus.
Good evening, my name is Rob McManus, I live at 8922 Felicia Drive in Afton, Missouri. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the long evenings and the speakers we have on our behalf the past few weeks. I'm in this phase of relocating, not for Rob, but for my employees and our community. Last week, you heard most of the speakers mention Rob, it's not about Rob. Rob's just an ordinary guy. For customers to say that they feel safe, give us a key to their home, we go in their home and work while they're away, speaks for the company and my employees, not Rob. For neighbors to speak of how we have improved the property at our existing location speaks about our employees, they care about the place they work. For Brian Green, a 20-year employee, who's not a public speaker, to come up and speak about us giving them time off speaks not about Rob, but about the rest of the employees pitching in, working harder, longer days, and meeting the deadlines when a coworker needs to take off for his son. Why? Because we're all family. McManus Construction is a family business, and we treat our employees as family. I am grateful for the community's support of our relocation. I was taken by surprise last week at the support from so many people. You heard from new neighbors, customers, existing neighbors, school districts, just ordinary community supporters about us relocating. I failed last week, I failed to reclinize those who were here to support our cause, and glad my wife spoke up to follow up on that after me. To change the subject with the remaining time, I would like to give back to you, our county council, some valuable information about a program, the Missouri Baptist Disaster Relief Program. It's not about our community, but it's a statewide program, and we work in other states as well. This program deals with flooding, tornadoes, and tree cleanup, childcare, communications during loss of phones, and mass feeding. On behalf of King and Baptist Church, at the end of the meeting tonight, we would like to present each of you with a Bible, and inside the front cover of the Bible is the contact information for the Missouri Baptist Relief Program. And the members that are going to speak on that tonight are going to stick around after the meeting if you all have any special questions, thank you.
Steve Neff.
Good evening all, my name is Steve Neff, I do not live in the district, I live in, I live in High Ridge in Jefferson County, I go to church with Rob McManus, and I too want to speak to the Missouri Disaster Relief Program. Just a little information about it, it was started in the 60s after Hurricane Beulah, started in Texas, and was very small operation, and has grown drastically in the following years. 1973 was the first international involvement after the earthquake in Nicaragua, 1976, they added additional states beyond Texas, Oklahoma, Louisiana, Mississippi, Kansas, and Nebraska. By 1988, they added even more, Tennessee, Alabama, Illinois, Arkansas, North Carolina, Missouri, Kentucky, Florida, and Ohio, as we continue to grow. We continue to grow in 1995, and the fleet report across the nation in 1995 was 95 mobile units and 3,000 trained volunteers. By 2004, the fleets included 487 mobile units and more than 28,000 members trained to help in our communities. Since 1967, with a handful of Texas people who answered God's call, the Southern Baptist Relief has grown into the third one of the three largest disaster relief agencies in the country, along with the Red Cross and the Salvation Army. Whenever there's a disaster, we always see the Salvation Army or the people in red, they make it on the TV, you don't see the people in yellow shirts behind the scenes doing most of the work. The Southern Baptists cook most of the food that are distributed by the Salvation Army into the communities. We work behind the scenes, and we are the ones that are helping these people. We have six units in the metro and the surrounding counties, set up at the different Baptist churches, some of the things that we have worked is the North County tornadoes, Kirkwood tornado, the ice storm in southern Missouri, and then we, everybody's aware of the devastation that happened in Joplin, we were there for weeks on end. I lay this all out to explain that when the need arises, Rob and Angela have been there with us, both working and more importantly, supplying us with their trucks and equipment. This is who they are, they are people who care about hurting people, both physically and spiritually. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bill Petty.
Good evening, I am Bill Petty, I live at 5856 Birch Hollow Drive in Oakville, I failed to say that last week, and I'm sorry. I am also with the Missouri Baptist Disaster Relief, I'm the Assistant State Director for Communications. We have a radio trailer equipped with high frequency, ultra-high frequency, and also VHF radios. We give each one of the recovery teams that go out a radio, we have mobile units that stays in contact with those, and then we have the radio trailer, which is a clearinghouse for information to come in, information to go out, to keep everybody going, give different job assignments or changes throughout the day. We use the GMRS and the Business Band and 2-meter mostly, but we have capabilities to talk all across the state with the HF radios. We also have a voice over IP, we have the ability to, we, in fact, we just upgraded, set it up yesterday in Van Buren for the first time, the new spot-beam technology through Hughes Network, high-speed internet from satellite, and we use that a lot for setting up the voice over IP telephones, so that we can conduct business, so people can call in and ask for our help, and also for those who can't call family members and let them know they're okay, we let them use the phones for that also. They're deployed right now through Missouri, they're in Neosho, they're in Dolphin, in fact, I just got an email just before I got here today, they're needing 10 to 15 volunteers tomorrow morning, as the Red Cross has asked for 7,000 meals, 7,000 meals a day for an undetermined amount of time. And then in Van Buren, which got hit really hard, we have mud-out crews that started working this morning. It's an active volunteer that goes on year-round. Thank you.
Bill Knitig.
Good evening, I'm Bill Knitig, and I'm still here from the 1800s, since last week when I talked. I'm here to talk about chainsaw, and I think it goes without saying that you all have a basic understanding of chainsaw work, so I will not bore you with that, instead I'll tell you about the ancillary product of being on the chainsaw crew. And as Steve had mentioned about Joplin, you know, we arrived on Friday, May 27th of 2011, and it wasn't just chainsaw crews, it was communication teams, shower units, feeding units, daycare units, and so on. But let me tell you what we saw, what we heard, and what we learned. We saw devastation beyond description, lost souls, literally people walking around Joplin who have been lifelong members there did not know where they were at because all the street signs were gone and all the houses, all the landmarks were gone. We heard unbelievable and tragic stories, like that of Edie Howard, who lost her husband, her daughter, and her son, 19-month-old son. We did not hear people talking about death count or number of people missing. We heard a story of a woman being sedated for surgery only to wake up in the parking lot of the hospital. We learned that sometimes Christians can get in the way of God's work. There was a lady that we spent a whole day with a crew of 10 people cleaning her yard, and when we finished each session, we take the Bible, we sign it, and we give it to the family, and we ask to have a prayer, she declined, saying that she has had a bad experience with church, but she appreciated our work. We didn't put the trees back in her yard, we kept them out, okay? We learned that everyone has a role, there was literally a drive-by pickup truck with nurses in the back asking who needed their tetanus shots. We never asked them for identification, so I have no idea what I was injected with, but I'm still here. We learned that in the midst of disaster, Christ puts people in the right spot. Steve that spoke earlier was in Joplin, his daughter was in Springfield, Missouri, only one hour away, when she needed surgery, and he was able to drive and be with her. And we learned that through tragedy comes triumph. And this is a single mother with her seven-year-old son, and when we got to their house, all the trees, everything in that yard had fallen, nothing touched their house. She said her seven-year-old son asked, "Mommy, are we going to die?" She had just moved from Texas, four years ago, the day the tornado hit in Joplin, she lost everything she had in Texas due to a flood. When she moved to Joplin, her husband died, then the tornado hit, she was devastated. But when we talk about what we do, we were blessed, because she said it's the most male attention her son has ever had in two years. And I've, one thing is, Rob and Angela McManus still keep in touch with this family. That seven years ago, Rob put him in his Bobcat, put a hard hat on him, gave him a pair of work gloves, and that seven-year-old boy then, who's now 15, still remembers that. No one asked about how their house was or how their car was, they were asking about each other. And those stories are similar throughout all the chainsaw work we do, and all the feeding crew, and shower units we do, and it's because of people like Rob and Angela, who provide us the equipment that we need, that we're able to do this. I would have brought my I would have brought my, you know, long before all the protesting and everything happened up in Ferguson, Florissant. We have a shirt that says, "We are Ferguson," because we were there after the tornado hit, and we were taking care of our brothers and sisters here in the St. Louis area. So I just want you to know that whenever disaster strikes, we're there. McManus Construction and McManus family has always given them their time and their resources to assist. And I ask, would this not be someone that you would want to know and have as a neighbor? As we end our session now, again, do you want to present those now or do you want to present them at the end?
At the end.
At the end. But I just want to thank you for your time and consideration on the request of Rob and Angela McManus and their company. Thank you.
Kasilda Struckoff?
I'm Kasilda Struckoff, and I live at 10448 Gregory Court. And I'm here tonight to speak about the McManus sale of the property at Seibert and the purchase of the property on LeMay Ferry. And I am concerned about the order of McManus business deals in the sale of the property and the purchase of replacement property and rezoning. And rezoning is important. And I'm just wondering, in December of 16, Mr. McManus was denied zoning, rezoning of the property on LeMay Ferry from C8 to M1 Industrial District. However, on February the 1st, he sold his property at Seibert anyway. Thirteen days later, there was a hearing held, and he attempted to get the LeMay Ferry property rezoned to C7 General Extensive Commercial District. Then on March 6th, the decision was made to zone the LeMay Ferry property to amended C8. Keep in mind, C8 is not industrial zoning. Without the zoning he was after, on March 9th, McManus purchased the property on LeMay Ferry without the approval of the county council, nor with a contingency on the sales contract. This is not the normal, or doesn't seem to me to be the normal way a businessman would do this. Why would a business owner sell his business location before he had another property zoned properly? I ask you this: Why does McManus need general executive commercial district zoning if he just is going to use the property for the headquarters of McManus Construction and to allow for the location of snow removal equipment, sales, repair business? What does the wording "headquarters of McManus" include? I heard tonight a lot of good things about Mr. McManus, and I heard it before, and that's important. But my concern is that Mr. McManus has two, had two locations where he has his property. He had a lot of heavy equipment, and I'm concerned with that area. And it's not in an industrial park, and it's on a big hill, and I'm concerned about what kind of vehicles and trucks. I know he had dump trucks. I'm concerned about all of that in that location because it is more of an urban area than when Phoenix dealt there. So my concern is that. And he had some property, Mr., he has a second location, Lynn Vale, and that has a lot of vehicles, I believe, and equipment on it. And I wonder what his plans are and why he needs to have it rezoned, if it's just for a few snow plows like that gentleman said. I just wonder what is, what the words "headquarters of McManus Construction" includes. I know and I hear that Mr. McManus may be a good man, but I feel his wants and needs do not supersede what is the best for the residents of District 6. Thank you.
Anthony Dunn?
Hi, it's Levek. And I own the property at 4575 LeMay Ferry. And I've spoke for Rob, and I think by now we all know that Rob is a good guy and has a great business. He has concerns for the neighborhood and whatever, and I totally agree with all that. I have a twofold reason for being here is I spend, as Show Me Lanes, I spend thousands of dollars a year to keep the outside of the building painted, holes patched, grass cut and whatever. And to piece a property at tee time was an absolute disgrace. And it was, I probably went up that hill way more than anybody else in this room checking out the competition back and forth or whatever, and it was pretty sad at the end, the last six months or a year. I mean, the building was a disgrace, and I would like to see that cleaned up. And I think that the commercial and the residential people would like to see the same thing. It affects the value of the property. And right now, that, he's doing a good job. He started on it. I don't blame for not doing any more until he finds out what happens here, but I think if we can get him in there, he'll get it cleaned up like it should be, and he'll be a very acceptable person there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Philip? Maybe it's the ball. I can't read your last name here.
Good evening, council. Guess I want to do a brief history lesson. Down in the city, the state of Missouri took over the police department in 1861 and did not give up local control until 2013. 1861 was still before the Emancipation Proclamation, which was 1863. 1955, the St. Louis County Police became the St. Louis County Police. So in 1974, there's a county charter. And why do I bring up these historical highlights? Because we don't like to talk about race. We don't like to talk about racism. But if you govern us from a 1974 perspective, then keep in mind what that says about us. So this auditor slap, and we want to talk about the charter, then maybe we ought to revise the charter or amend the charter. Because if we stay stuck with St. Louis is known to be, and we don't open our minds and our hearts, then we're going to continue to repeat. I don't believe, Mr. Stinger, what were you, two years old, 1974? Do we really want laws that govern us when we were children? Lastly, Dr. King once said, "Gradualism is nothing more than standstillism, which leads to do-nothingism." And sometimes when I listen to the council, that's when I feel like I'm stuck in some time warp. Talk about security real quick. Post-Dispatch had an article last week about tickets that were being written. We want to talk about public safety? Then how do we not enforce the tickets that were being written because it wasn't legitimate? By what authority do we speak? So I'll reach out to Mr. McCullough. And we agree to disagree, but please don't preach to us about public safety if we're not going to enforce the laws regardless of how old or how young they are.
Dennis Daniels?
My name is Dennis Daniels, and I live at 3720 Southern Manor Drive in South County, not far from LeMay Ferry Road and the property under concern. I have some significant questions and ultimate concerns about what's taking place tonight and with the property. Of these questions, what is McManus' main business? What is the percentage of each type of business he does? Do we know these answers to these questions? What equipment will McManus have on LeMay Ferry property? And I'm asking the council to thoroughly check into this before any key decision is made. McManus had a trucking company. Does he intend to bring it back? What is the future intended for the use of 4613 LeMay Ferry Road? Yes, we've heard some doom and gloom in terms of what was there before, but let's not let hindsight and mistakes and what has happened in the past cloud our judgment in the future without doing our due diligence. What are and where are McManus' plans for something nice at this location? I think the community deserves that. What is the need for industrial zoning if the property is only for sales of snow plows and some service work? McManus may have gotten a good deal on the property, but is that okay to authorize his company in this area at the expense, potentially, of South County residents? Again, what are his intentions and future plans for this particular property? It's not just McManus that counts. If we allow another construction company in the area, just because Phoenix is already there, to open, setting the, paving the way for a third construction company and a fourth, where does it end? This is a build-up area with a lot of apartments, homes, shopping centers, retail traffic, young and old trafficking LeMay Ferry Road, which is already very busy, and many of the drivers that are in there are going to be at risk. I'm of the opinion that McManus Construction Company belongs in an industrial park. I hope you share some of these concerns that I have. So ultimately, what is the truth to this story? Let's fill in the rest of the story, ladies and gentlemen. And I thank you, Councilman Trakis, for doing your part to seek the full truth. Thank you.
Thanks. Steve M. Uto?
Hi, folks. I ain't never done this before, as you tell. Glad to see you all. I ain't got no McManus or anything on my agenda for this evening. I would like to start a neighborhood watch program for my neighborhood, and I've contacted the 3rd District Police Department in Afton to get information on what I have to do to start this particular foundation. And it's for the Hanover Heights and Branson Track, which is also considered Ratchet Park, and McDermott and Haynes areas. I can't get no response from the police department on what I have to do or what the procedures is to start this particular operation. And if there's anything that you folks can do for me, I'd appreciate it. My name is Steve Wudd. I live at 4830 Heidelberg Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123. And my phone number is 314-478-3522. And I say, I would appreciate all the help you can give me because I'm having a little bit of trouble getting it started. And I think this will be an asset to my community, the rest of the neighborhoods within the community. We have a few issues, and you will see me again, but that'll be on a different time for a different thing. And first of all, I got to get the neighborhood watch program set up. Thank you for your time. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tom Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. First, I want to say last week's meeting went very well. There was a lot of public input, a report from the county police about flooding problems, and an issue was discussed with the county councilor in the open. Changing the rules guaranteed that the 40-or-so speakers got a full three minutes, thanks to Councilman Trakis, who proposed the change, and the council for approving it. Also at the meeting, Councilwoman Wassinger withdrew her bill that would give $100,000 to the Magic House. It's puzzling to me that of all the problems of St. Louis County, Councilwoman Wassinger thinks a priority should be giving tax dollars to a private organization that clearly doesn't need it. Also at the meeting, in response to questions from Councilman Trakis, the county councilor talked about honor and dignity in running his office. He overlooked how political considerations play a part. On January 6, 2015, after only a few days in office, Mr. Crane told the council he needed more help in his office and wanted to hire two more lawyers. What he failed to mention is these were patronage jobs for the county executive. One lawyer that was hired worked in county executive Stinger's law office and had only passed the bar six months before. Mr. Crane also mentioned that the Public Corruption Unit of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office was involved having to do with the qualifications of the auditor hired by the council. Clearly, that has to do with politics. When it comes to real corruption, Mr. McCullough doesn't have a very good record, and just recently, he was in the paper having to do with policing on MetroLink. His office stopped prosecuting fare violations more than a year ago. Speaking of MetroLink, as I have been saying for years, the council needs to provide much more oversight. All these disputes over security on MetroLink could have and should have been dealt with a long time ago. I hope the canceled council of the whole meeting on MetroLink can be held soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Phil Johnson?
Good evening. Phil Johnson, 3651 Sagamore Hill Court, Florissant, Missouri. Yes, my name is Phil Johnson, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and good evening to the council and everyone in their respective places. First of all, I am with U-Hodos Law &amp; Care in Lansgate, and we have had a professional business relationship with Mr. Rob McManus and his staff for the last five years. Some of the work that we do includes working for the St. Louis City Public Schools and some MetroLink contracts and work as well. One of the things that we really like to enforce in our business is to do quality work. And we had basically purchased our first plow, snow plow, from Mr. McManus. Had nothing, we had no information, didn't know what to do. He was friendly, his staff even educated us on what we needed to do. In short, he's always been there, and he is the type of business person that you want in your community. He's an asset to the community, and we know that he is making it happen for people, especially we as being minority business enterprises. And we need that type of relationship, someone who cares, someone who's going to give you that quality product, someone who's going to give you that personal assistance. We do understand location, location, location is very important, but we support him, and we pray that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes the public forum. We will proceed with the introduction of bills. Bill Number 117, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance amending Chapter 102 Title II SCRO 1974 is amended county council by repealing and reenacting Section 102.030 pertaining to regular meetings of the county council. Bill Number 118, introduced by Councilman Page for Councilman Walden Gray. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with EFK Moan LLC for consulting engineering services in connection with reconstruction of the James S. McDonald Connector and the railroad crossing on Frost Avenue, and authorizing execution of the contracts with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for related services, AR 1700. Bill Number 119, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Classic Air Care Incorporated for replacement of waste treatment centers at Lone Elk Park, PC 613. Bill Number 120, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 26664 by repealing and reenacting Section 5 and 8 pertaining to the Pfizer Incorporated Industrial Development Project. Bill Number 121, introduced by Councilmember Trakis. An ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans for the amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of a tract of land subject to conditions, and repealing Ordinance Number 15277. tract of land subject to conditions, and repealing ordinance number 15277, PC 0617, McManus Construction Incorporated. Mr. Chairman, that's all of the bills. Bill number 113, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Move to perfect, Bill number 113. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, Bill number 113 is perfected. Bill number 114, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect, Bill number 114.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, Bill number 114 is perfected. Bill number 115, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect, Bill number 115.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, Bill number 115 is perfected. Bill number 116, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Page. Move to perfect, Bill number 116.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, Bill number 116 is perfected. Moving to final passage. Bill number 116, 2015, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold, Bill number 116.
Bill number 116 is held. Bill number 109, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
Move to, for final passage of Bill number 109.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger? Councilmember Walton Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, there are six ayes and two absents. Bill number 109 is finally passed. Bill number 112, 2017, introduced by Councilmember Page. Move for final passage of Bill number 112.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger? Councilmember Walton Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
There are six ayes and two absent. Bill number 112 is finally passed. Moving to resolutions. Mr. Chairman, we have one resolution this evening. Please read Resolution 1. Okay. Whereas Thomas Ernest has embalmed St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School since he began his career in education there in 1975, fostering a love of knowledge in the students he taught, coached, and nurtured. And whereas Thomas' repertoire has ranged from reading, writing, and arithmetic through rocketry and robotics, inspiring all he has taught and mentored to expand their thirst for learning. And whereas Thomas has announced his retirement from his beloved St. Paul's School, and a county council deems it appropriate to applaud all he has done for the children of St. Louis County for more than four decades. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the county council congratulates Thomas Ernst, rather, on the occasion of his retirement and extends its best wishes for continued success and happiness. Administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Thomas Ernst as a permanent token of the county council's highest regard. Thank you.
I move for approval of this resolution.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Councilmember Walton Gray?
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
There are six ayes and two absent. Resolution number 1 is adopted. Moving to unfinished business. Item number 1. Hold on the order of business, that will be the order. Item number 2.
Receive, file, and adjourn to the Department of Transportation, Public Works, Department of Planning, and the county council.
It's ordered. Item number 3.
Hold on the order of business.
It's ordered. Item number 4. Hold on the order of business, same motion to item number 6, that would be the order. Moving to new business. One prepared order tonight.
I move for adoption of order number 1.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Order number 1 is adopted. I would just like to make an announcement that it's my intention to postpone the council meeting immediately following Memorial Day. We have some councilmembers traveling, and we'll allow everyone to be with their families that week, and we will reschedule that meeting later in the summer. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Or adjourn? Thank you.